Once Laura starts to record the session, I will repeat everything that I have said. So my apologies. Very good. Thank you, Laura. Okay. If you're interested in speaking during the public hearing portion of this public hearing, please raise your hand. Laura will write your name down. She will create a list and we will reach out to you as we go through the morning. Again, I thank you all for your participation. I apologize for the late start. My fault. I got some late invitations out. We have 20 people in the hopper already. I appreciate your interest and your participation on the day. The agenda is what you see on the screen right now. Again, if you're new to Teams, put your mouse in the middle of the screen, drag towards the bottom, you'll get an action bar. You have the ability to unmute yourself. I can mute you, but I cannot unmute you. When it is your turn to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name, the organization you represent, if in fact you do represent an organization, and then you are free to testify. We're going to try to limit testimony because of the number of people that we have in the room to five minutes. So far, I've only seen one person interested in testifying. However, so we may eliminate that limit if there's only one person who wants to speak and everybody else just wants to listen. That may change after my introduction and brief overview of the purpose for our public hearing today. So I'll leave that up. If you want to speak, simply using the Teams app, raise your hand. Laura will take your name down. She will indicate when it is time or when it is in fact your turn. For the record, I believe everybody knows, but this virtual public hearing is recorded. It will be available on the department's website within a day or two after this public hearing is held. We have, technology is a wonderful thing when it works and it's not a wonderful thing when it doesn't. So again, I thank you all for your indulgence. I'm going to give it two more minutes because of the late start relative to invitations that I sent out. So I appreciate your patience. And again, if you're interested in speaking when we get to the public comment portion of today's event, raise your hand and we will in fact offer that up to you. I am going to start now. For the record, I am Michael Santoro. I'm the director of Policy Research and Housing Support at the State of Connecticut Department of Housing. We are here today and I will take that off now. As part of the citizen participation portion of the department's obligations associated with the Housing and Community Development CARES Act funding flowing through the Department of Housing. Specifically, this is the second amendment to the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan specifically for COVID-19 funding. This is the second allocation of funding under COVID-19 that has come to the Department of Housing. For those of you who are not aware, CV1 or the first allocation, we received funds under the Community Development Block Grant, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS Programs. Second allocation only provided funding under the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Emergency Solutions Grants Program. That is predominantly what we will be talking about today. I will put the plan up and do a quick highlight of the sections of the plan which we believe are most relevant. If however, when we get to the, after the public comment period, if you have questions, you are welcome and I encourage you to in fact ask. I am calling up the plan, the second amendment right now, and I will put it up on the screen. I will attempt or do my best not to move too quickly because some people do get, you know, feeling of vertigo when those things happen. So this is the plan. It is available on the department's website right now. If you need an emailed copy, you can either download it or let us know and we can email you a copy. Again, I am not going to read the entire plan. I'm going to hit the highlights before we go to public comment. Oh, the other introduction, the person I refer to in the background is Laura Watson. Laura is not the hurricane that is currently ravaging the mid and southern U.S., although there are days, you know. Anyway, within the plan, we are specifically talking about the amount, yes, I hear you laughing, Laura, the amount of money we received under the CARES Act. The table in front of you, I'll blow it up a little, shows you with it, we have through the State of Connecticut Department of Housing received a little over $40 million, $40,395,417. We received it in two tranches. Tranche one was 8.138549 in CDBG, $8,159,579 in ESG, and 38,000, a little over $38,000 in HOP. The second tranche, which is the primary focus of this plan, is we received an additional $11,467,321 under CDBG and an additional $12,591,306 under the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Both of those programs are fairly heavily regulated. There are rules about how we can spend the money in addition to the COVID-specific rules that apply to both. And that's fairly easy to remember. For either pot of money, essentially for any of the CARES Act funds that have flowed to and through the State of Connecticut, the funds must be documented to prevent, prepare for, or respond to COVID-19. That is the general federal guideline for the use of those funds. In addition to that, there are specific programmatic requirements that would apply based on the funding program that it is associated with. So all of the CDBG Community Development Block Grant rules and regulations, with some exceptions, apply to those funds under CDBG-CV. Similarly, all the rules and regulations associated with the Emergency Solutions Grant Program would also apply to the ESG funds that we have received with the caveat that it must also prepare for, prevent, or respond to COVID-19. As most of you are aware, we modified our citizen participation plan to allow us to do this virtual public hearing to limit the public comment period. Formerly, it was a 30-day requirement. HUD provided a number of waivers, one in particular which allowed us to do a five-day comment period. As it happens, this particular plan has now received two five-day periods. We had originally intended to have a virtual public hearing back on August 4th. Those of you who don't remember, August 4th was the day of reckoning. We lost power here in the State of Connecticut for a significant period of time. David Rich and a couple of other people were actually on the virtual public hearing that we started shortly after 3 o'clock and immediately ended at 3:12 when my power and internet went down. We therefore determined we were going to have to repost and hold a new virtual public hearing. At the same time, or immediately after that, HUD decided to come out with a number of waivers associated with both CDBG and ESG, and we felt it appropriate to take advantage of those waivers. Specifically, we are talking about the $11.467,321 in CDBG and the $12,591,306 in ESG. That being said, we also again took advantage of a couple of waivers that are available through HUD. The one in particular which we have no current plans to avail ourselves of, but in this plan are reserving the right to do so, is under CDBG-CV2, the State of Connecticut Department of Housing, unlike normal CDBG, has the right to act directly. Normally, under CDBG, we can only pass the funds to units of general local government or UGLUGs. The allocation that we received for CV2 has that same requirement, however, two specific provisions are allowed under CDBG-CV2. We can act directly as a state and we can use our funds in what are called entitlement communities. Normally, the CDBG money coming to the Department of Housing can only be used in non-entitlements. There are approximately 12 entitlement communities here in the State of Connecticut. They get a direct CDBG allocation from HUD. Normally, we are prohibited from using our CDBG money in those communities. That's true for CV1. However, through the waiver recently announced by HUD, we can use some of our CV2 money in entitlement communities. As I mentioned a second ago, we could also choose to act directly. At this point, again, I will reiterate, the State of Connecticut does not have any plans to directly utilize our CDBG-CV2 funds. However, in this plan, we do reserve the right, should circumstances change, to do so down the road. Pardon me. The table in front of you lays out how we intend to allocate the CDBG-CV2 funds. The top table is the CV2. The bottom table is CV1, which is a slight modification from the original amendment that we heard or that we put out for public hearing two and a half months ago. In any case, what you can see is out of $11.467 million, we intend to make $10,607,272 directly available to UGLUGs or units of general local government. We have reserved the 5% that is allowed for admin as well as 2% for technical assistance. To be clear, the administrative authorization of 5% is greater than the normal 2% plus $100,000. This is one of the recent waivers that HUD passed. It is what we believe necessary in order to be able to ensure that we correctly, properly spend the CDBG-CV2 funds. We can always choose to spend the admin. If we don't use it for admin, we could move it to program dollars. If that is available and necessary, we will do so. The 2% technical assistance is just for that. We can acquire the services of technical assistance providers, both for ourselves and for our grantees. So if you are a grantee and you're interested in using CDBG-CV funds, but you need technical assistance, please reach out to the department. We can provide a consultant to you to help you carry out a CV2-related or CV1-related activity. I will give you the quick breakdown on ESG as well, and then we will move to the public comment portion of today's hearing. Again, I apologize for the scrolling. CV2. What you see before you is a table followed by details in the plan on the various activities planned for the ESG-CV2 funding, as you can see. For CV2, out of the $12.5 million, the Department of Housing is taking no administrative set aside. We are eligible for up to 10%, but based on the need, the activities that will be carried out associated with the ESG funding, the department has opted not to take any of this administrative fund. So 3.5, a little over 3.5 will be added to the department's existing rapid rehousing initiative and an additional $1 million will be specifically dedicated to case management associated with rapid rehousing. We are adding $2.5 million to the prior $2.8 million that was committed to the eviction prevention program. That program is going through its final formative moments. We hope to be able to launch that program in detail in the coming weeks. We have sought a significant amount of input in the creation of an eviction prevention program, specifically understanding the limitations and requirements of the Emergency Solutions Grants Program while also understanding that we have somewhere between 800 and 1,200 pending evictions in the State of Connecticut. The governor's executive orders have forestalled some of those actions, if not all of them, but at some point, as they say, the bill will come due. We are attempting to have the eviction prevention program in place to forestall a significant number of those actions. We're expanding shelter funding for operations and activities. Our shelters have experienced a significant amount of additional work, workload, overtime, equipment requests, PPE, et cetera. Those funds are intended to support them in their counseling and social service activities associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. We are adding a new activity, homeless outreach, specifically a million dollars of the new ESG money is targeted to do additional outreach above and beyond what is already funded. And we are putting $1.25 million in homeless diversion activities. We have been carrying out homeless diversion in some parts of the state for a number of years now. It's been very successful in limiting the amount of homeless individuals and families. We believe that it is important that we use some of these funds to assist in that activity as well, particularly as households are negatively affected by COVID-19. We are also setting aside $1.25 million for additional coordinated access network staff and staff at 211. The amount of calls, the amount of work associated with coordinating all the various activities that are underway throughout the State of Connecticut have put an extreme burden on the coordinated access network and on 211 United Way. These funds will be used to bring on additional staff in support of those activities. Since we had a couple of new people scroll in before I started, let me reiterate. We are going through the agenda that was posted on the department's website. We are on item two, which is general purpose and overview of the CV2 plan. If you are interested in speaking as part of the virtual public hearing component of this event, please use the Teams app and raise your hand in case you don't know how. Put your mouse in the middle of the screen, scroll towards the bottom, you'll get an action bar. You'll see a little hand. Just click on the hand. It will raise a hand for us to see and Laura, my partner, will take your name down and when the time is ripe, we will call you to unmute yourself and provide testimony. We have also taken and will continue to take written public testimony until the end of the day today. Because we're virtual and the department is fully teleworking, we're going to call that midnight. So don't worry with yourself about 5 o'clock. If you get written comments to me on or before midnight tonight, we will include them as part of the plan submission to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And to be perfectly frank, if you get it to me tomorrow morning, I'll take it too. We try to be as inclusive as we possibly can when it comes to public participation. Before I get started and open for public comment, are there any general questions associated with what we're doing here today? Just unmute yourself and ask. Five, four, three, two, one. Okay. With that, I thank you. I'm going to leave, I'm going to take the plan down, stop sharing my screen so that people can see who is speaking. I will turn to Laura. Laura, if you would, please indicate who is first up as part of the public comment portion of this virtual public hearing. Thank you, Laura, but you can unmute yourself and announce the next time. David, GR, you are up first. If you would introduce yourself and the organization you represent before you begin. Thank you.
Yes, good morning. Thank you very much, Michael. My name is David Gonzalez Rice. I am Senior Program Manager with Connecticut Coalition on Homelessness, and I can hear a bit of feedback here. I'm not sure if that's on my end or if you're hearing that as well, Michael.
We are not hearing it on our end, David, so it must be just on yours.
Must be just on me, so I will do my best to ignore that and soldier ahead. So want to say on behalf of my agency, CCH, and our member coalition of some hundred providers, that we really appreciate the thoughtfulness in this plan. Some of the new investment areas in particular, like homeless outreach, are very welcome at this time. So overall, this is a really strong demonstration of the department's commitment to effective interventions targeted to ending homelessness. So I just want to point to a couple of areas where we would urge the department to consider in more detail with further planning and RFPs and contracting processes with the eventual grantees. Under the CDBG funds, we just note that eligible uses of those funds do include some of the same activities that the department has in mind for the ESG-CV allocation, including shelter diversion, including homeless outreach, including homelessness prevention. So would just urge the department and its representatives in working with the applicants for those funds to really be looking for, you know, all opportunities to align resources and efforts as much as possible. And under the heading of the ESG-CV, you know, we're pleased to see the, similar to tranche one, significant investment in rapid rehousing, shelter diversion, and coordinated entry. We know how effective those are. We know that Connecticut is heading into this pandemic with strong performance numbers from our recent point in time count and just our general census of people experiencing homelessness relative to other parts of the country and that our history of using these interventions is a big part of why, you know, we're coming into this now uphill battle in the context of a pandemic from a position of relative strength. Want to especially endorse the intent to offer funds for the emergency shelters and for homeless outreach. Want to highlight that our homeless shelters are facing even greater staffing pressures than ever before, insofar as many of them have relied on volunteer staff as well as have staff who have had to take themselves out of the workforce due to concerns about their own or their family members' health. And just hearing from our providers that heading into cold weather planning, uncertain about what kinds of facilities and staffing costs might be increased relative to last winter as they, you know, try to figure out how to provide overflow and warming space in a way that does not increase the risk of COVID prevalence for the people they serve or for the community in general. So those additional cost burdens are already being felt and we do project the shelters will be facing more of those in the coming months. For homeless outreach, you know, one of the challenges in Connecticut historically has been that our largest funder for homeless outreach through, through DEMUS, it's a really critical partnership, but those funds have always been pretty constrained by the funding restrictions of SAMSA that people enrolled in that program meet DEMUS target population criteria or identify as having a serious mental illness. And we know that many people that street outreach teams connect with don't meet that criteria or don't identify in that way. So the Department of Housing's recognition that there is a real unmet need for sustained outreach to people regardless of their mental health state or how they identify or their receptivity to receiving services under that label, especially now when, just on the call with some providers earlier this week, learned about a couple of people they have been able to serve who have taken to living in their car just within the last few weeks. Afraid to say we may see more of that in the coming months in the current economic crisis. So really pleased to see the Department of Housing investment in outreach and just want to encourage the planning process to ensure that that comes out in coordination with existing outreach efforts and fosters a coordinated and systemic approach to homeless outreach, trying not to duplicate efforts as much as we can. One area where we have some concern, and I say this, this is a, this is a complex issue, so I want to speak with care here, that for the two and a half million that's designated to eviction prevention, you know, we do quite understand the need for an eviction prevention intervention. It's our perspective, and we're drawing here on some background work from National Alliance on homelessness and research on prevention interventions for homelessness, that eviction prevention and homelessness prevention can be pretty distinct from one another, insofar as eviction prevention is really intended for and targeted to leaseholders. And the cohort of people most likely to fall into homelessness within a specified timeframe are often seriously doubled up, what you might call couch surfing, in more tenuous situations without holding a formal lease. So we would say, you know, sort of in both directions, that one, trying to use ESG dollars with the constraints that come with that, being dedicated to homelessness and homelessness prevention. We're concerned the department may find that they're not able to offer eviction prevention assistance as widely as would be necessary, having that intervention for leaseholders in mind if it's difficult to show that everyone who's in need of that intervention is really at a significant risk of homelessness. And then on the converse, you know, currently our shelter diversion, rapid rehousing, shelter interventions really are focused on what we consider a narrow window of imminent risk of homelessness. And there's a large group of people who are more unstably doubled up and serially moving around, who would fit neither the current CAN coordinated access criteria for shelter diversion nor hold a lease. So it's our sense that a targeted homeless prevention program that was not restricted to leaseholders and that was working somewhat closer to CAN processes, but targeting people who are really in these more tenuous doubled up situations would be the most effective use of the ESG-CV dollars. And we believe that the state has an opportunity to seek other funding streams for a needed eviction prevention effort that, you know, really could be broadly offered without having to try to demonstrate that every household receiving that intervention is at a demonstrable risk of homelessness. So, you know, with that, it's sort of, it might feel like hair splitting, but we just feel strongly that the, this ESG investment is such a unique opportunity. The State of Connecticut has within our reach the ability to house nearly every household currently experiencing homelessness. So a really targeted and focused use of these dollars seems really critical from our perspective. Thank you for the time to share those observations with you. We know it's difficult to project in this time what need might look like a few months out. Things seem to change every month. So we appreciate the department, your thoughtfulness, the opportunity to speak, and I'm happy to take your questions or, you know, supply further comments and follow-up.
Thank you, David. Thank you for the comments and we appreciate both time and the effort that you through the Connecticut Coalition on Homelessness provide every day. And one thing I will say, it doesn't change daily or weekly. Things literally change moment to moment. At least that's the world that I'm living in these days. So I fully grasp and appreciate your overall support for the department's plan. With that, we will move to Vincent Santilli, Mr. Santilli, would you unmute yourself and the floor is yours?
Yes, I believe I have, and good morning, everybody. Greetings from Home City Brave in Bridgeport, Connecticut. We appreciate certainly the opportunity afforded by the Department of Housing and Commissioner Muscara Bruno to just speak this morning. And I did provide written testimony on August 4th, when, as was mentioned earlier by Michael, the weather had other ideas as far as us continuing to have our this hearing. We operate three facilities in Bridgeport, two of which are transitional, including the only one in the State of Connecticut exclusively for female veterans and their young children. We also have a permanent housing facility here in the Black Rock section. Almost all of our beds in our transitional facilities are male and female veterans, although there are five DEMUS beds here in our main men's 42-bed transitional house on Park Avenue in Bridgeport. We do provide housing, food, vocational services, case management, life skills workshops, mental health treatment, which was added in 2019 January as PTSD and overcoming, you know, substance abuse is a very, very common denominator here. substance abuse is a very, very common denominator here. We have a walk-in drop-in veteran service center, which again, provides everything from computer classes to job prep workshops, therapy dog visits, AA meetings, et cetera. And so I just wanted to point out, we've been extremely challenged with and by the pandemic, our costs for food, for cleaning supplies, personal protective equipment, all have been significantly increased. And we also, you know, occupancy has remained pretty stable, but we expect a significant influx when the eviction moratorium ends in October. And so in just looking at the plan and so forth, we certainly agree that prevention is extremely important, and, but again, we just wanted to point out, for us, DOH support has been and will be critically important both now and going forward, as, you know, programs like ours are not just looking at, you know, prevention, but are delivering services to especially homeless veterans right now. And so I'd like to just go on record as respectfully requesting consideration in tranche two, and going forward as, again, Department of Housing support has just been critically important to run our operation, and I'd be delighted to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Vincent. I appreciate it. We appreciate your participation, both back on the original day, August 4th, as well as today, and we do have your written comments. They will be incorporated in our plan and submitted to HUD when we do submit. Is there anyone else who would like to testify as part of our virtual public hearing? Anyone who is here has the right and opportunity to speak. If you would, just raise your hand so that we can make note. We literally just have to identify who you are and who you represent. So again, if you decide to testify, please identify yourself and the organization you represent. We are going to hang out here for a while. I will, in a moment, take some public comment. We have a number of individuals who got late invitations, and I do expect to roll in specifically, Senator Anwar and Representative McGee have indicated their interest in participating. They both got late invitations. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang out here for a while, because we're very interested as the co-chairs of the Select Committee on Housing in their comments and in their opinions. All that being said, is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak or comment on the department's plans? Please just raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, because I do see, I think at least one or two people, oh, no, the only one on the phone was Vincent. If anybody has anything you'd like to say as part of the public comment period, please raise your hand, and I'll give you a few seconds to figure that out.
Mike, this is Shelley White with New Haven Legal Assistance, and I apologize that I have not been on Teams before, and I'm not finding, I'm not finding the little hand.
Okay. So Shelley, take your mouse, put your cursor in the middle of the screen.
Yeah, yeah, I got that.
Drag it towards the bottom. You see the action bar?
I see the video, the mute and everything, yeah, the bar.
There's a little hand. There, it just looks like a hand. If you clicked that, it will normally light originally. But you've unmuted yourself, so good. Please feel free.
I didn't see a hand, though. I apologize for that.
No, that's all right. You're unmuted, please.
I just wanted, in lieu of the earlier comments with, from the Coalition in Homelessness, I was a little bit confused by the comment about the money being used for people that were leaseholders, and, as you know, the $2.5 million that is going for eviction prevention, you commented that the goal of that was to use that for the approximately 800 or 900, I think it's significantly more people than that, that have cases pending right now in the housing courts. And wanted to just point out that by definition, all of those people are people who have had their leases terminated because they don't, because they owe money. And what we're trying to do is to get these evictions resolved, so that we can keep people in their housing, keep them stably housed, or get them moved to new permanent housing, all of which we hope, and we're expecting to be flooded by this. I think the scope of the issues right now in eviction court are really massive, and I think we may not be, the $2.5 million is undoubtedly not enough, but we're extremely appreciative of that amount going to the people we know in the courts. And we're just trying to keep the streets, so to speak, from being flooded by getting people in, keeping them in their housing, or getting them moved to new permanent housing at a time when doubling up with people is really very problematic for people. And just wanted to clarify that and to say how appreciative we are of that money, and believe that it would be able to be, to put to, it's not enough, but it would be able to be used very effectively to get rid of a lot of these cases that are pending in housing court, and keep people in their housing, and not have them enter into the shelter system. So thank you so much for that, and that's my comment.
Thank you, Shelley, and I appreciate the comments. And just so that we're talking apples and apples. Tranche one allocated $2.8 million to eviction prevention, tranche two, an additional $2.5. So total available is about $5.3 million, which is intended to do eviction prevention. We are working on the details for that program now in coordination with the coordinated access networks, in consultation with the various legal aid organizations, as well as the housing mediators of the judicial branch working in the housing court. We're actively engaged with all parties. We want everybody's comment. We want to try to craft something and roll out something which we hope will be as effective in addressing that problem, as well as the broader issues that were identified by CCH. Absolutely. So, hmm, I don't see anybody in the lobby, but I, hold on one second, I'm getting a text from, oh, yes, I will send, Representative McGee is looking for the link. So Laura, you can't do it, right? I have to do it. So I will see if I can. So I apologize, everybody, for just a moment, while I, again, send out the link. So I've made, you may all get a new notice of the meeting. That's the easiest way to resend it. Okay. I see a hand, and that is David Gonzalez Rice. You have some, so what I'm going to say to you, David, before you start is, you have had your opportunity to testify. If someone comes and wants to speak, I'm going to have to ask you to halt, but if you want to add to what you said a little bit earlier or clarify, we're happy to let you do that, so.
Thank you. Because the previous speaker mentioned some confusion about the distinction I was trying to draw, I think the operative point for an eviction prevention effort seems to me that the ESG comes with a threshold criteria tying the intervention to homelessness, and the kind of the weak correlation between a formal eviction and future homelessness means we may find, despite good planning efforts, some difficulty in applying ESG CV to every household that needs the intervention the speaker was just describing. So again, I fully support the idea of mounting an eviction prevention effort to scale, and feel it could be best done by pulling in additional and different sources of money.
Appreciate that, David. Thank you. I want to welcome Representative McGee. Representative McGee, you're a little dark, and I don't mean that in a funny way, I mean your, your video screen is, it's very difficult to see you, although we appreciate your participation. You can unmute yourself. Where'd you go?
I just took, I just took my camera off. It's okay.
Oh, very good. No, you were, it was fine the way it was. It was just, it was, we could see your, we could see your red baseball hat very clearly. Anyway, we are in the public comment portion, so Representative McGee, if you have comments on our plan, we would welcome any comments that you have, sir. The floor is yours.
At the moment, I do not have any comments. I'll continue to listen.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. So is there anyone else who would like to make any public comment associated with our Hearing none, then I'm going to open the floor up to just general questions about, specifically, I'd like the questions to be associated with our CV plan. If you do have other questions, please, we can save them to the end, we can actually do them off-recording if you have non-CV plan-related questions. Anybody, again, raise your hand, and if you can't figure out how to raise your hand, unmute yourself. I can't unmute you, I can mute you, but not unmute you. Please unmute yourself, and once you start, we'll call you out so that we can prevent any verbal stomping. The floor is open. Any questions from anybody on our CV plan? Representative McGee, now, you look great. Oh, it's the red shirt and a blue hat. Wow. Yeah, that was bad before. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. I hear no questions on our plan. So that being said, Laura, I'm going to move that we close the public hearing. However, don't go anywhere, everybody. Once we close the public hearing, we will stop the recording. And then I'm willing and happy to stay on in case anybody has questions. I also plan on staying on for a little while, in case any of the late invitees show up and do decide they want to testify. We'll reopen at that time, take their public comment, and include that in the record. But for now, Laura, would you please stop recording?